The Clarion County Commissioners are joining us tonight, so it's a busy night here on Feedback. Good evening, I'm Mark Despotakis, welcome to Feedback talking a lot of politics tonight. Joining us coming up later in the show are Clarion County's Commissioners John Shropshire, Donna Hardle, and David Seifert, that's coming up in just a few minutes, but also talking politics here in the opening segment, we didn't get to it last week, well, we were talking about the shooting last week, of course, but this week, talking about politics, maybe a subject that's just as bad as talking about a shooting sometimes. Cheer laughter in the background. The presidential politics, which may be even funnier than local politics sometimes. Last week, we have Bradley dropped out, and so did John McCain, well, he didn't drop out, he suspended his campaign, saying that he's still going to be in it, you know, I don't know really what that means, not giving up his delegates, but it looks like George W. Bush and Al Gore will be the winners for that, so, once again, proving America only likes monosyllabic names, I guess, because not going with McCain and Bradley, but, it's kind of interesting, you know, Super Tuesday happened last week, Bradley not winning any of the primaries, all going to Gore, and then Bradley coming out and, you know, sort of giving his concession speech, and throwing his support behind Gore. Now McCain did not do that, and McCain also said that he's only suspending it, meaning he's not going to campaign, I guess, at all, he's going back to the senate to fulfill duties there, but not officially calling the campaign off, still retaining delegates, also Alan Keyes is still in the race there, but, the interesting thing about this was, like, the media, we're starting to love this race, because, you know, we have been hearing about it for, you know, ever, it seems, when this whole thing started, seemed like eons ago, I remember talking about it on this show, when this first show was first created last April, we were discussing the presidential election, and everyone's saying, "Oh wow, it's great, you know, Bradley's in here, they can take another part of Democratic Party", and McCain, because McCain was getting a lot of the crossover vote from the Democratic Party, it seems that George W. Bush really staying just with the tried and true Republicans is, you know, what we've been sort of seeing, and, a lot of people have now been saying, "Well, that's a shame, because McCain is out now, and there goes the crossover votes, and the independent votes, so what's going to happen to those now, is it going to go to Al Gore, is it going to go to George W. Bush?", I mean, it's really not, it has lost its excitement, and the question also now is, what's going to happen, who's going to be the next president, Al Gore or George W. Bush, and a lot of people were saying, "Well, Bush is not going to be able to stand up next to Gore, and, in a debate, maybe", say, you know, if they're up there debating, George W. Bush may not be able to handle it, which, you know, maybe, or not, but, the problem is, at least from what I've seen and what I've heard, is that George W. Bush is only pulling in the core Republicans, and, that's why, you know, as I said, McCain was sort of bringing in the crossover vote, and, that may become a problem, it's something that we talk about all the time, the partisanship of politics, and, could this be causing more partisanship with people just voting for George W. Bush? On Sunday's late edition, I believe, on CNN, I saw Pat Robertson on there, one of my favorite people, of course, and, he was saying that, he was talking against John McCain, saying that, you know, he was speaking ill of George W. Bush, and how bad that was, and he says, "And you should realize that our enemies are not those fellow Republicans, they're the Democrats, they're the ones who are enemies", and I thought, you know, how is that getting anything done? It's all about working together, and there should be some type of teamwork involved in making it all happen, no partisanship, that this party says this, and this party says this, and that's the way it should be. So I think that you need to pay very close attention to the presidential election, whoever the next president's going to be, I think it's already decided who the nominees were going to be, I mean, wasn't that going to be a great Republican convention if it was down to the wire with McCain and Bush? I mean, that would have been a lot of fun, but, looks like it's just George W. Bush and Al Gore, so we'll see what happens in the fall. So enough about national politics, we're going to take a break, and we come back, we're going to talk local politics with the Clarion County Commissioners after this.
This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by The Captain Loomis Hotel and Restaurant. The Captain Loomis Hotel and Restaurant is located at 540 Main Street in Clarion, and offers dining as well as a nightclub. The restaurant and nightclub are open seven days a week for your convenience. Call The Captain Loomis Hotel and Restaurant, 226-8400. This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by Clarion Office Equipment. Clarion Office Equipment is located on Greenville Avenue Extension in Clarion. They can handle all your office equipment and computer needs. They are open Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You can call Clarion Office Equipment at 226-8753.
It's not just about making plans, it's about making a difference, and taking an interest, not just earning it. At Edward Jones, it's about more than investing, it's about knowing you. Edward Jones, investing in you and your dreams.
Feedback starts now. And I said, "You know, when the better name for a movie to come out now, and I think I'm going to make the movie, you're right to book, it would be a great book to have, and you can call to get her book, you can also find it online, but I have a feeling I'm going to be rather opinionated, people I know, so, let's ask them about scheduling." Why is it that students have such a problem here?
Tune into Feedback with Mark Despotakis every Tuesday and Wednesday night, beginning at 7:30 p.m.
Because we're totally out of time, no time to talk to you, we'll see you tomorrow. And welcome back to Feedback, as I said, we're talking local politics, county politics here, the Clarion County Commissioners join us, John Shropshire, Donna Hardle, the Chair, and David Seifert, thank you guys for joining us.
Thank you.
So, been in for three months now, how's it going?
Great.
Great?
Going really great.
Putting in a lot of long hours, and, just going through the paperwork.
You said-
Mounds of paper.
You said, when you walked in tonight, "I went home, changed, and I came here", so it's been long days for you, then.
Yes, it starts early in the morning, and, pretty much ends kind of late at night.
How's it going for you so far?
Pretty much as expected, we had a lot to do, we knew we had a lot of things that we had to do, and, so we're doing them. Dave and I do have one advantage, though, because we're only doing one job, Donna is doing two, with the Commissioner, and also doing the job of the Chief Clerk, and, so, but things are going pretty smoothly, though.
Okay, so, give us, you know, every year we make the President give us a State of the Union address, can you guys give us the state of the county, maybe not an address, but, you know, where are we at in the county right now?
What have we done so far? We amended the budget when we went in, that was approved before the end of January, we made a few changes, nothing drastic.
Got our people a 4% pay raise.
Yes.
We didn't get it, we're governed by cost of living raise.
When you say the state of the county, that's a little different, because financially, we're not in bad shape, we are probably looking at some changes for this year, though, but technically, because of what I think was a mistake on the counties from last year, we actually ended up with more money than they thought they had, and that enabled us to work some things into this year's budget, and gave us a little bit of a reprieve for this year, to get things in order, and, so that was an advantage, it was not as bad as we thought it would be financially, because of a carryover of money that, actually, for the last three years, they had, I think, about a million dollars that they didn't realize they had, and, so, that money has been the boon to us so far this year. That's unfortunately only going to be a salvation for one year, we'll have to deal with the other costs of county government in next year's budget, though.
If you're reading the papers, you see a lot about the Facilities Planning Commission, there was some controversy there, maybe if you could, guys could explain what it is, and what has happened with it?
Well, the Facilities Planning Committee, what we wanted to do was to, well, actually, when we got up there and found that they didn't have one, that was kind of scary, because basically every organization has some kind of a planning device that tells you where you're going, how close are you, and so forth, this one really, they've never really had one, and, so that the Facilities Planning Committee is basically looking at, specifically looking at how much office space the county needs to run county programs, how are we paying for these things, and then they're going to come back to us and make a recommendation to us, and that will go from there.
Okay, should this be public, should that be a public meeting, I mean, that was the question, you know, from the Clarion News, should that be a public meeting?
No, under the guise of the Sunshine Law, it's perfectly legal to have a closed-door meeting, because we, as Commissioners, are not involved with it, we deliberately distanced ourselves from it, so we wouldn't have any political input of our own, this is an independent committee, working by themselves, together facts and figures, and they will present that to us in, middle of April?
Middle of April.
Middle of April, at a public meeting, and that'll all be open, everything's there, if the people want to do a little work in their own, they can find it.
So, it's an independent committee, so where are the members being drawn from for this committee, I mean, did you select them?
We selected them, but they come from the whole county, and a variety of positions, the Chairperson, Dr. William Coffin, is the Superintendent of Schools for Clarion Area Schools, they just got through doing a major renovation project, so these are things that are certainly on his mind, because he just went through a very similar situation, Dr. Willis Tripodi, who was the Chairperson of the University's Facilities Planning Committee, which is the largest and most active Facilities Planning Committee in the county, he's the Chairperson of that, and he's a member of that committee, there are a number of other people who've had distinguished careers throughout the county, and who have skills, I don't know, have time to name everybody on that committee, but they all have a major function to help us in coming up with some big decisions.
There's actually been a couple added that we didn't pick, we had like a list of 20, and the Chairperson went through and picked out who he could work with, or what he thought would be adequate, and, they had the right to add people of their own, which I believe he did.
Yes.
So, at this point, is it's under the control of Dr. Coffin?
Yes.
Okay, so, it's his decision on public-private, or is it your decision?
No, it was their committee's call. The Commissioner Seifert signed the law, which governs that, we are governed by the Sunshine Law, anytime we make a pause, Commissioners, we have a public meeting, it should be an open, public meeting, this is a committee, however, that did not run for public office, and they are doing a lot of research for us, and then they will present, we'll hear it actually the same time anybody else will.
So you know none of the input at this point?
Don't have any idea.
And I think it's best, too, for those committee members to work in that type of atmosphere, where they are open to discussion, and, sometimes, you know, when you yourself look at something, you look at it so long that you don't see the obvious, and to have fresh eyes, and fresh ideas, and people just sitting around, and tossing out different discussion items, sometimes, you know, it'll direct you right to where you have to go, and I'm very pleased with the people that, excuse me, have generously donated their time and their efforts to this, we could have done the same thing, but, it's so time-consuming, and, we've got other things that are on our plate right at the present time.
Okay, a lot more issues we're going to talk about, we're going to take a break, though, and we'll be right back on Feedback after this.
This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by Curly Tires. Curly Tires is located on Greenville Avenue Extension in Clarion. They offer a wide variety of tires to meet your car or truck needs. Curly Tire is open Monday through Saturday, call 226-6657. That's Curly Tire, phone 226-6657. This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by Timberland's Restaurant. The Timberland's Restaurant is located near Interstate 80 and Route 68 in the Holiday Inn. The Timberland's Restaurant is open daily 6:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Call 226-8850. This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by The Pizza Pub. The Pizza Pub is located at 1306 East Main Street in Clarion, and audio dispatch delivery, call 226-8721. The Pizza Pub is open seven days a week for your convenience, phone them at 226-8721. When other stations are showing their boring programming, only one station is bringing news coverage closer to home.
Now, so you'll hear First Time Five.
Every Tuesday and Wednesday night at 8:00 p.m., join the area's news leader, TV5 News. Tune in for the latest in local, regional, state, and national news, plus with our newspaper exchange partner, the Clarion News, teaming up to bring news coverage closer to home every Tuesday and Wednesday night at 8:00 p.m.
Welcome back to Feedback, I'm Mark Despotakis, and joining us tonight are the three Clarion County Commissioners, John Shropshire, Donna Hardle, and David Seifert, we were talking a little bit earlier about the Facilities Planning Commission, I'm going to talk about a specific facility now, the county jail, well, actually, let's first of all talk about the old county jail, you know, that was one of the issues last time you guys were here, where are we at with that?
I'd say we're on hold right now with the old county jail, we got some other issues to address, that's more important than county jail, we've accomplished what we said we were going to do, we stopped the wasteful spending of monies on a renovation project.
One interesting thing, we did have a tour of the old jail today, with the Rotary Club, and a lot of them toured it for the first time, to go inside the building, to see what goes on in there, if there are people out there that would like to see it, they should call us, and I would be happy to show them the inside of that building, if they haven't had that opportunity.
Well, what's going, what is in there now?
The only thing that's in there is the 911 Center and the Emergency Management Office, primarily, where the old cell block is, is where we have record storage for some of the different offices, but there, again, that is not the best climate to have papers and old documents in, so, right now, that item is on hold, the old jail, until we, I would say, get a feel from the Facilities Planning Committee to see what they have in store for us, as to some of our other outlying departments and buildings, and then be able to incorporate that into our overall plans.
And that means April 12th, you know, we'll hear that.
Yes, you'll probably hear some reaction from us in the next two months, dealing with that issue.
All right, let's talk now about the current jail, there was an article in the paper, and I wanted to bring it up, fortunately I didn't bring it with me tonight, but, as I recall, there were some complaints made by a mother of someone in the jail, do you guys have any comment on that, or is that left to the people at the jail?
On the Chair of that particular committee, and, this involves a personnel issue, or possible litigation, and I just don't feel it'll be prudent for us to comment on it this time.
Okay, that's fine.
We have a special prison board meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, which we are going to take into consideration those statements made by the parents of the individuals that were housed in the Clarion County Prison, but, like Commissioner Seifert has said, we can't really comment too much because of possible litigation, so, we do have a meeting scheduled, and then we'll be able to go from there.
Okay, that sounds good. Another, just keep throwing controversies out, the one we've been hearing about, I do what I can, was about Cindy Callahan at the Voter Registration Election Office, I believe there was a plan to amend her job, maybe if you could explain the plan, and maybe fend off some critics of the plan?
I'll start with that, the misconception about what we were doing there was brought in fact that we are going to make some changes, we argued all, the three of us, when we were campaigning, that we thought the county should have some more modern facilities, equipment, techniques, and, as well, and, in those areas where we think we can modernize, we're going to do that, this one was brought on simply because the Chief Clerk resigned right before January, right before we came in, that's the office that we had to look at first, and there is some overlapping issues, and, so that the, but the Chief Clerk will be the new Director of Elections, well, we have been combining those two offices in the past, and most counties do, and, in some cases, you could probably argue that it worked fairly well, it's not the way the law, the county code is set up, though, there are two separate functions, one is for voter registration, one is for the Director of Elections, and the, I mean, basically, you're trying to count who is eligible to vote, and who voted is another issue, they should be merging those two lists at some point, they ought to say the same thing, they ought to mesh, when you have people doing both jobs, the opportunity for error is mathematically increased, and, sort of, the object is to simply separate those two functions, so that you have a check and balance system on who is voting, and who should be voting, and who actually voted, all we're doing really is separating those two functions, if something happens, it's the Board of Commissioners who are in charge of the election process, not the Director of Elections, or the Director of Voter Registration, they are simply people who work for the Board of Commissioners, but, the people are legally on the line, or the three Commissions, and the law states very clearly, that's our responsibility, so that we got to make sure it works, and if, I don't mind having that responsibility, but, if it's going to be our responsibility, then I want to make sure it's working right, and, it has nothing to do with Ms. Callahan, who was actually one of the most competent workers at the courthouse, and I am upset that people tend to think that anytime you make a change in something, that it's intended to embarrass or demote somebody, it's not, it has nothing to do with her, it's the system that we've allowed to develop here, that is what is under attack, not her.
So, okay, go ahead.
What we had said even prior to us getting into the office, that we were going to look at the whole county structure of government, not one area in particular, but each and every office, as well as each and every department, like John had alluded to, yes, the reason why we chose this office first is because it ties in with the Chief Clerk position, actually, those, we're hoping very shortly that we will be able to start the interview process, both for the Chief Clerk, as well as the Deputy Chief Clerk, the final job descriptions have been tweaked so many different times, and changed so many different times, they're now with Human Services as of last week, so we're getting very close to finalizing that in our department, and then at that point in time, we will take a look at another department, and keep on going down the list.
So we can expect to see more of this, maybe?
I guess I'm odd man out on this one, there's presently 50 other counties who are operating the same as we are right now, and I believe it was Adams County just went over to this way, that means there must be 150 other Commissioners not on the same page, but my colleagues are right, that they can split the office, if they so desire, being odd man out, that means I will still throw my hat in and work to be sure it's done correctly, I'll take care of the people in the office, so, we have a difference of opinion on it, but, we're going to make it work.
Okay, well, that's, I think that's what the constituents are going to want to hear, that even though it's, you know, you may be willing to work together.
Sure.
So, just, let's just recap that real briefly, now, the Director of Elections goes under the Chief Clerk, that person becomes Director of Elections, and, which is, you guys oversee that, and then Cindy Callahan is now just Voter Registration.
She's the Director of Voter Registration, and she will, we oversee that, too, both of these people will report into the three of us.
Okay, just a couple minutes left, maybe about a minute and 30 seconds left, but I just want to actually speak with you, Mr. Shropshire, you were actually here in Becker Hall last week, for the Clarion County Coalition for Ethnic Tolerance, could you maybe explain what you're going for with this?
Well, I was asked to come in and talk to the, by the Commission on Presidential, I think it was, actually, I think it was the Presidential Commission for Women, but I'm not 100% sure which one, I think there are four Presidential Commissions, and Dr. Kristin Marshall is the one who invited me to come in and talk about the Clarion County Ethnic Tolerance Coalition, which was formed about four years ago, in Clarion County, to combat the rise of hate crimes, Pennsylvania has jumped up to the fourth-largest state now in the United States for numbers of hate groups and hate crimes, and, so it has become an issue, and, one of the, I just, I was out of town Saturday, but the Chief of Police and the Sheriff both called me this weekend, I didn't get a chance to tell my fellow Commissioners about this yet, but, we had a basketball game up here between Kane High School and Farrell High School, and we did get calls from the Police Department of Kane, to expect the Klan rally at the football game, that three busloads were coming down, fortunately, they either decided not to do a march, or, they, either they didn't show up, but, we did have, the Sheriff's Department was on duty, as well as some other police activity prepared, in case something happened, but, I'm not here.
I hate to cut you off, but we are out of time, that's certainly an issue that we can, you know, that we can devote a whole show to that sometime.
Be happy to come back.
Hopefully, none of that ever actually does happen in the area, but, thank you guys for joining us.
Thank you, sir.
Continued good work, and good luck, and long days at the courthouse. Thanks for joining us, we'll be right back after this.
This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by The Carpet Barn. The Carpet Barn is located at 470 South 5th Avenue in Clarion. The Carpet Barn is open Monday through Saturday for all your carpet needs, so call The Carpet Barn, 226-7332.
Getting out from the crowd is easy when you stop in at Fashion Bug located in the Clarion Mall, whether you're looking for junior trendy, girls, or fashion for women, they have it all with many different styles, with our newly expanded shoe and accessory department, you're surely to find that special touch to enhance that new outfit, and if you have a fashion question, our experts are here to help, that's Fashion Bug, located in the Clarion Mall, just off Exit 9 of Interstate 80, open Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., Sunday from noon till 5:00.
This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by Fox's Pizza Den. Fox's Pizza Den is located on Old Route 66 in Clarion, and offers all-day delivery, phone 226-5555, that's 226-5555. Fox's Pizza Den is open seven days a week for your convenience, phone 226-5555. This portion of the programming was made possible through a grant by Mulligan's Lounge. Mulligan's Lounge is located near I-80 and Route 68 in the Holiday Inn. Mulligan's Lounge is open seven days a week for your convenience, call 226-8850.
Welcome back to Feedback, just want to say goodbye real quick, once again, thanks to the County Commissioners for joining us, and, join us tomorrow night, we're talking jobs, we're going to be talking with New Choices, New Options Career Development Center, and the Small Business Development Center here at Clarion University, and also, a special note, tune in tomorrow night on TV5, as you remember, we had State Senator Mary Jo White on here, her special program on Main Street in Clarion will air tomorrow night here at 7 o'clock on TV5, we'll see you tomorrow night, have a good day.
This portion of the programming is being made possible through a grant from the Clarion Agway, located along Main Street in Clarion. Agway, located along Main Street in Clarion. The Clarion Agway offers a wide selection of lawn, garden, pets, and farm supplies. They also offer a large selection of power equipment. The Clarion Agway is open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., and Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. That's the Clarion Agway, located at 1130 East Main.
Be interested in coming? And I said, "Absolutely."
Roderick would nod and smile and pretend to consider my idea.